Okay, today is January the 10th, 2022. It's our regular monthly meeting. We'd like to first of all welcome everyone that has come out to be with us tonight. We've got some distinguished guests with us and we welcome them. We'll start off tonight with, I'm gonna move the prayer and pledge down just a little bit, and so we'll start off with the approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second. Motion second, in discussion. All in favor say aye. Next, we got the agenda, and I would like to add one thing to the agenda tonight, the proclamation for the Sheriff's Department that we have here tonight, what's going on.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of proclamation.
Motion is second, in discussion. All in favor say aye. Now at this time, I'd like to invite our distinguished sheriff up, Mr. Ricky Buchanan, and also Jacob Crowder. We're gonna have Jacob Crowder to do our pledge for us tonight, and we're gonna have Sheriff Buchanan to lead us off with prayer. So, Crowder, you'd like to lead?
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sheriff, please. Please, please. Pull back our heads. Dear Lord, we come to you today thanking you for all your many blessings that you bestow upon us every day. I ask you, Lord, to specifically be with our government and our county leaders as they meet regarding county business tonight. I ask you, Lord, for a special hedge of protection to be placed and continue to be placed around the men and women in emergency services. It's a tough time, Lord, but it's all according to your plan. And I thank you, Lord, for giving us the men and women that choose to raise their hand for the good of this community, and those that want to help, and those that choose to put their lives on the line for this community. I thank you, Lord, and again, I ask you to put a hedge of protection around each and every one of them. And, Lord, help us to put you first in the decisions that we make as leaders. Help us make those decisions, Lord, and have those decisions be to your will. Thank you, Lord, most of all, for sending your son to die for all of us. We love you, Lord. It's your name that we pray. Amen.
We just celebrated a special time, the year in recognition nationwide of our law enforcement, and we're proud to have our local law enforcement here with us tonight, led by our sheriff, Ricky Buchanan, which does an outstanding job. Ladies and gentlemen, we need to show our deepest gratitude to these fellows that day after day put their life and health and well-being on the line for the citizens of this county, and we certainly do appreciate that, appreciate all the effort that they put into it. I know it's a tireless job, and there's not a lot of recognition that comes with the job, but it seems like at times, but I just want you to know here tonight, we do recognize you fellows, and we do appreciate all the hard work. And I'll let some of the other commissioners say a word before we do our proclamation.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just say that we've got the best in the state, no doubt about it, the most dedicated, loyal, hard-working, and these men care about the people they serve. And I will say, thank you as Commissioner Froggy did. If that goes unnoticed, for sure, we appreciate you.
I know there's been times, about four years ago, I was having issues with my son, and one of your deputies spent about an hour with him, and it was a personal issue, but this father sure did appreciate that fellow doing that. And I know that many of you do take time out and help kids out in this county, help people out in this county, and it is greatly appreciated.
I thank you for everything you do. I thank you for getting up every morning, putting on a uniform, knowing what people think of it, because that happens sometimes. Sometimes it's a good day, sometimes it's a bad day. I'm gonna have to have the day to get you, I'm gonna make the next day, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your service and sacrifice to our community and role models that you are and the leadership that you provide to the county.
We can't thank you guys enough. We've got a little something we want to present to you tonight. It's a certificate of appreciation, and it's for the McDowell County Law Enforcement Officers. This is to all of you. It says, "The McDowell County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of the citizens of McDowell County, present this certificate of appreciation for the extraordinary efforts and sacrifices made by our officers and their family members on a daily basis in order to protect our schools, our workplaces, our runways, homes, and visitors. The McDowell County Board of Commissioners recognize, honor, and congratulate law enforcement officers for the safety and protection they provide for the citizens across the county." Would I present this to the sheriffs? Appreciate that. Let her get through. If they want to have it, all the commissioners, all the commissioners, come on up.
You all ready? Smile. Thank you.
Can I get one of the crew?
You can get the whole crew up here.
Yes. I accept this on behalf of all the men and women at the sheriff's office. I'm just fortunate enough to be the sheriff, but it's a true blessing to work with dedicated men and women that we have up there, so I want to recognize them and thank you all for recognizing what they do.
Ron, get a brother to your side. Just about you guys tonight.
Have it, have it.
That's all right. All right.
Thank you.
Ron, grab one. If you'll excuse Sheriff Lewis, we've got, there's a lot of the folks who are working tonight, as they'll be taken off. We appreciate this, and I also want to say that we appreciate the support from the board. We appreciate our partnering agencies that we work with. Law enforcement covers a lot, not just the sheriff's office, so the police department, our state, federal agencies that we work with, Old Ford Police Department, as well as Marion, and I've also got to mention emergency services as a whole, partnering William Keller and his group, and the fire departments. We can't do this alone, and it is definitely a group effort. We appreciate the opportunity to serve, so thank you all very much.
Next on the agenda is Board of Commissioners, I made recognition of Ned Fowler. Mr. Keller, would you like to lead up tonight?
Thank you for allowing me to present this evening and recognize a great friend and colleague. It's a real honor to have him and his family here, as well as several of his coworkers. I'd like to introduce Ned Fowler and his wife to come on up. Come on up. Alice, correct?
Yes.
All right. As long as I've known Ned, this is the first time I've got to meet his wife. His colleagues, Christie Bryant, who was taking Ned's place at Mission, and then Rick Baker, who has worked for Ned on peer support and curriculum lesson at stress management. Ned, when we talk about partnerships, Ned is right beside that word in the dictionary, and he emboldens so many different things. Ned has been the steady hand at Mission Hospital with regards to county EMS systems for many, many years, since I've been the director in 2007. Ned has had his hands on EMS in western North Carolina to help guide, direct, support in so many areas. He first went to, not McDowell Tech, but AV Tech. As much as we'd have liked to have him at McDowell Tech, he was really instrumental in AV Tech's EMS program, then moved over to Mission Hospital where he really connected with all the 19 counties in western North Carolina on a daily basis, getting us what we needed and having that conduit of communication with the other agencies, as well as the leadership at Mission. And if there has been one steady hand at Mission Hospital in Asheville, it's been Ned Fowler, and he's been a true advocate for EMS, and he's helped guide and direct the programs that we've implemented here in McDowell since I came in 2007 as the agency director. Ned, more importantly, I think, has really worked to help law enforcement, emergency services, not only in western North Carolina, but across the state, the southeast, and the United States, with regards to making mental health services, peer support services more readily available, and raising the awareness on the effects of post-traumatic stress, responder suicide, as well as the many other complicated issues that affect emergency personnel. As the resolution, when it's read, will show his leadership and dedication in western North Carolina is far-reaching, and has impacted truly so many lives. You can't quantify the effects that Ned has had in this region. He has saved lives by partnering with different agencies to ensure these mental health services are available, and that leaders are educated on the importance of offering these services, not only EMS, fire, but also law enforcement. So at this time, I'd like to turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman, for any comments, and I'm sure Mr. Fowler may have some of his own.
I'd just like to say, Mr. Fowler and Ms. Fowler, we appreciate what you've done for our community, as well as all the others, and wherever, but we appreciate what you've done for us, and we feel like, from Mr. Keller here tonight, that you have spurred him along and helped him with a lot of things, and made him the man that he is today, and we have the greatest EMS director in the state, and we're very proud of him, and we believe truly that that was through some of your help and guidance, and I think he would give you credit for some of that, so we thank you tonight for that and for all that you've done and contributions to our community. You want to say something? We'll let Mr. Walker lead.
Okay, resolution of appreciation for Ned Fowler. Whereas Ned Fowler began his public service career with Buncombe County Mercy Medical Services in 1975, and whereas Mr. Fowler moved to Asheville-Buncombe Technical Community College in 1983 in order to provide professional education for Mercy Medical Science students, and whereas he excelled in his community college career, retiring in 2011 as Associate Vice President of Instructional Services, and whereas Mr. Fowler transitioned to Mission Hospital in October 2011 to serving as the regional EMS liaison until his retirement from that position at the end of 2021. And whereas in the role of regional EMS liaison, Mr. Fowler was responsible for coordinating with EMS systems across western North Carolina, including McDowell County EMS. And whereas Mr. Fowler's personal experience as a paramedic with Buncombe County EMS gave him an appreciation and understanding of the role of EMS systems and their staff, and whereas he worked with McDowell County EMS and other agencies to develop staff support systems based on the crisis incident stress management model. And whereas the support and advocacy Mr. Fowler provided to McDowell County EMS and other EMS agencies was vital during the last 10 years, especially during the COVID-19 pandemic. Now therefore, be it resolved that the McDowell County Board of Commissioners do hereby congratulate and offer gratitude to Ned Fowler for his career of public service, and especially for his role as Mission Hospital Regional EMS Liaison. Let's give him a hand.
We'll give you a second to say something if you will, Mr.
I'd like to say thank you to the board, to William, to Adrian, and to all of the folks with McDowell EMS. McDowell County has been a leader in EMS across the state of North Carolina for many, many years. When we in Buncombe County were training to become paramedics, we came to McDowell County as part of our field internship training program, because McDowell County had had paramedics for several years before we did in Buncombe County. And it's been an honor to work with William and Adrian and everyone at McDowell EMS over the years, as they have continued to excel and lead EMS agencies across our region and across the state in initiatives like advanced cardiac care, coagulative DKGs, and management of ST elevation MIs. McDowell has led EMS in that area. They led EMS in the development of community paramedic program, and I cannot list all of the different things that McDowell EMS has been a leader in. It's been an honor to work with William and Adrian and all of the folks at McDowell EMS, and I sincerely appreciate this honor tonight. Thank you.
We appreciate you, and as well your wife. Behind every good man, there's a good woman that is supporting him, and we appreciate her as well. Would you like to begin with this? We'd like to say we certainly appreciate your hard work, and we appreciate it very much.
Chairman, can you step to the...
Thanks. Congratulations. Joe. Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you. It's your... Okay. Mr. Go, if you'd like to stay up in the podium, we'll turn the sign back over to you again, where I say you don't get.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, today. Appreciate you allowing us to present the update once again on COVID-19. Today is day 665 that the Mercy Operations Center has been activated for this incident. Unfortunately, we find ourselves in the midst of another surge that we hope will be peaking soon. Today was a record day for McDowell County for a Monday report. We reported 169 new cases since Friday. The 14-day positivity rate is 20.4%. That is high, but taking a look across the state, there are some counties that are approaching 40% in eastern North Carolina. North Carolina had a record day on new cases on Saturday, with over 29,000 new cases reported, and set a record for hospitalizations in a 24-hour period on Friday. We continue to participate in state calls with regards to hospitalization forecast, emergency department forecast for the next couple weeks, as we anticipate the peak of the surge should occur. There's a significant amount of community transmission occurring. We have outbreaks at long-term care facilities once again, as we are dealing with the most contagious variant that we've dealt with during the entire pandemic. We have several long-term care facilities that have multiple staff that are experiencing positive results, and the EOC continues to work closely to ensure that these facilities have adequate staffing and have, we're standing by to support them in any way. On the operation side, testing throughout the county, there is long-term around times with regards to testing with PCR tests. There is a national shortage with regards to rapid testing in the supplies for that, which I'm sure numerous citizens have encountered. The EOC does have a backup plan, working with the Health Department, should we see capacity tighten even further with regards to PCR testing, but there are numerous labs or private entities in McDowell that continue to test, including Andor Labs, which is also partnered with the school system for several drive-through clinics each week, and they continue to test five days a week in the Lady Marion Plaza, along with the prescription pad, CVS, and our urgent cares that continue to test. Vaccine clinic, there remains significant capacity in the private sector with regards to vaccine administration. We do have the next clinic at the Health Department on Friday, is the drive-through clinic from 12 to 2:00. Our team is closely monitoring the medical surge. We worked closely with the hospital over the weekend, ensuring that citizens that were needing admission placement were transported appropriately to locations where beds could be found. Friday evening, along with Saturday morning, was a rough time locally, as we were seeing a number of patients. At one point, we had up to 12 patients looking for placement and needing admission. So, the local hospital was on partial diversion on Saturday. We saw other regional hospitals be on partial and/or full diversion over the weekend, and that's something that we continue to monitor closely. Not all of that is related to COVID, but COVID certainly does play into capacity issues, and as the ERs fill up, that affects people that aren't having COVID-related issues as well. The biggest challenge that we continue within emergency services is to maintain adequate staffing levels. The sheer transmissibility of this virus is one that is extremely high, and that can impact staffing levels in our EMS system, as well as the 911 center. Literally, you can change our staffing levels in a 24- to 48-hour period if we have an outbreak occur. So far, we've been able to maintain adequate staffing and it hasn't affected services, but that's something we continue to work with, along with our agency partners on a daily basis. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may have regarding COVID, and then I'll provide an update on our flash flood recovery.
Mr. Keller, I've seen and heard in some articles, and help us understand, with such record numbers, they're saying that we're about to transition from the pandemic phase to the endemic phase. How can that be possible? Is it just more people have the virus, and then does that equal some type of herd immunity? Or how did it derive in that endemic to the pandemic?
So it's a really good question, and I'm probably not the best one to explain it, but when you get natural immunity as high as, when you're seeing in North Carolina 28,000 to 29,000 cases a day, and so, that's the size of smaller counties that are testing positive in one day. So as you have a variant that is this contagious, that is continuing to burn through the population, and you couple natural immunity with vaccine immunity on top, then you're quickly going to reach a point where the virus doesn't have room to run. And most of the information that is out indicates that this is going to move us towards, or closer to the endemic phase. And I think the question is, it remains, is there an additional variant? We thought after Delta that potentially, the Delta surge was going to be the most significant surge that we've seen, and that certainly this one has overtaken the surge that we saw in Delta. What we are seeing is the number of ICU admissions, like we've seen in Delta. We are seeing an increase in general hospital admissions, but the severity is not, on the ICU side, is not as high as it was in Delta this time. A caution, and remember, the hospitalization, as well as the deaths, both of those are lagging indicators, but we should quickly realize our hospitalization over the next seven to 21 days.
What's our vaccination rates and boost rate?
So you're at 57% partially vaccinated, and that is for all eligible citizens of five years of age and older? And then we're at 53% all fully vaccinated? We don't have to break down on the booster on the charts up here?
I'll just say, you brought a really good point. One thing that's very important, people who may need elective surgeries right now, they're being turned away because the hospitals are feeling that again, as you stated, so that's a point I've not really thought about, the people who need certain things that can't get them done because the services aren't available right now.
Yeah, I'm not sure on the elective side, what I was referring to is, when you start having people go into the emergency department for non-COVID-related items, such as cardiac problem, or respiratory, or anything not related to COVID, a hip injury, for example, when you're seeing long turnaround times in the emergency department, because they're holding patients needing admission, and there's no bed availability, that affects everybody, regardless of what your condition is. And then it starts to back up EMS, because you have long turnaround times in the emergency department because of decreased bed availability. So I'm not sure on the elective side, I'm not aware of those, but it's more of people seeking care in the emergency departments.
This new variant seems to be less violent on the fully vaccinated people. That's for it.
Yeah, so just our dealings with this virus so far is, the people who have been boosted, unless there's certain underlying medical conditions that are pretty extensive, the symptoms have seemed to be mild, and, but I think this is, this virus has shown us that it affects different people in different ways, and it's, there's no textbook definition of what it's going to do to an individual person. I mean, it's, I think a number of people will say it's, it can affect everybody differently based upon your age, condition, so forth.
Well, one more question for you. What's the ratio of people who are being transported to the hospital, Mercy Rooms, because of COVID, versus the people who have not, who have not gotten the shot? That's who you're transporting, right? People who have not gotten the vaccine are the ones that are being transported? What percentage?
Yeah, it's heavily, I don't have the exact percentage, but it's tonight, it's heavily weighted towards the unvaccinated. But you are gonna have people who may have been vaccinated, but yet they're not boosted, and have underlying medical conditions that require them to seek advanced medical care. It's back to where we were at just a second ago, is it affects each individual person differently. The immunity from the vaccine can affect each individual person differently, and that's what we continue to see. But overall... But overall, we have seen very few people that are both vaccinated and boosted that are requiring emergency medical care.
And second part, how many people are y'all transporting to the emergency room who have been, well, vaccinated already, but versus, again, those that have not been vaccinated due to the booster, the booster? How important is that booster as well?
Yeah, I think the booster is extremely important. I don't have the exact figures with me on EMS, vaccinated versus booster with me tonight. But it is, it is critical to be boosted. I've been boosted. A number of our staff has been boosted. And vaccines are the way to, with the booster is to ensure that you are giving yourself the best chance to decrease serious illness, hospitalization, and death if you do contract COVID. There are going to be breakthrough infections. There are individuals who are vaccinated who have contracted COVID. But we're trying to reduce severe illness and ultimately death with the vaccines.
And one more question. How many people have you taken to hospital because of side effects from getting a shot, the vaccine shot?
I'm not aware of any. I'll cross-check that with my deputy director.
No, no transporters. We've had a couple at the clinic, and maybe you've had some anxiety or fears and assesses after, but we're going to have been transported to the hospital.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Keller. We appreciate all the hard work that you do. Again, you guys work countless hours and no recognition. We certainly do appreciate it, and we thank you for what you did for our county, you and your staff. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, before he covers the flash flood event, would you like to discuss the face covering policy?
Yeah, probably.
The board had authorized that over the Christmas break through tonight. I think the staff request would be to keep that in place, perhaps through the February meeting.
That is correct.
So we need to take action tonight.
Yes, sir.
Whether we're going to extend that or not. So what's the board on extended?
One question, we, oh, well, I have more so actually, yes. So these, the face cameras are not required if an employee is in their individual office, correct? If nobody else is in there?
That's right.
If they're in a county-owned vehicle going to do county business, if there, if nobody else is in the car, they're not required to wear a mask, correct?
That's right.
All right. So basically, the only time they're required to wear masks is in a Congress setting, correct? Or when they have someone from the public who enters into their office? Is that right?
Right, or a coworker?
Or a coworker who has them, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, I made a motion that we go ahead and continue this for 30 days with understanding that those items that were just answered by our county manager still remain in place.
Good, good motion, second, you got a second.
Could you make that through, through our next meeting?
I think it was 14, the next four.
February 14th.
New discussion. I certainly favor it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You're opposed? Yes. Okay, that's taken, all right. But Ms. Keller, you can go ahead and give us that.
All right, so a good bit, a bit of good news with regards to the flash flood event in October and tagging along to the tropical storm Fred that occurred in August. So two different storms, one recovery process. Last week, we were notified by the Office of State Budget Management of a program that would open up that would allow private, or citizens to file for damage assistance, or damage assistance if they encountered damages to their home, private roads and bridges, or culverts from tropical storm Fred and the flash flood event of October 7. This is only the second time since I've been at the organization, since '98, that we have seen an assistance program that would provide the citizens an avenue to seek reimbursement for damages occurred to private bridges, culverts, and other types of private road systems. We argued for this back in 2018 during Tropical Storm Alberto. A number of you received many, many calls after that storm. People that had $30,000, $50,000 bridges washed away, and there was no assistance on a general, or there is no program for this type of recovery assistance after a disaster. Through the work of our office, Mr. Wooton, the board, and Representative Green's office, language was crafted in the state budget to make this program available for 11 different counties. And this opened up last week. We're in the process, our office, of contacting over 100 citizens in the county that filed a damage claim with us during Fred and the October 7 flash flood to make sure they know, one, that this program is available, two, provide assistance in assisting them in filling out the application. A number of these are elderly folks, and we will make our office available to walk them through that and apply on their behalf or assist them with the application if that's needed. And we understand the different challenges of broadband, lack of broadband in rural areas, of them not understanding how to do it online. So we're working through that closely with the Office of State Budget Management. A number of the citizens who have already filed damage claims have received a date where they will have an onsite assessment by the project managers of OSBM. And we hope that they can recoup some of the damages or costs that they have already paid out of their own pocket to repair these bridges. Many locations, you're talking $25,000 to $50,000 worth of damage. And getting these people an avenue to drive back to their house instead of walking long distances remains a top priority of our office. So I'm happy to report it's off to a good start. It's just a matter of continuing to get the word out and making sure these people understand how to file, and our office will be there to walk them through this.
Ms. Keller, what's the total dollar amount of state that's set aside there?
Don't hold me to this. Let me get that to you. I think it was $44 million for private roads and bridges, but I'll have to get that number back to you.
Mr. Chairman, I would just state that as a commissioner, I appreciate on behalf of the 100-plus people in McDowell County who suffer damage that our staff is going and making the phone call to those people and helping them actually fill out, the elderly people who don't understand this, filling out the forms and offering internet capabilities to do so. That's major because my goal would be to have every, if it's 125 people in McDowell County who have had damage, you're doing it, all 125, they'd be contacted. And I just seem to see all 125 of our people get reimbursed out of these 11 counties first. So let's speed it up, and you're doing great on that, and hats off to you for being proactive and coming. Not, I would dare say in the 10 other counties, that I guarantee you, they're not calling those people up. The emergency manager's not calling everybody who's contacted them and said, hey, look, this man's available. This man's and his staff and team's doing that, and that's big time. And I mean, that is, that is showing you care about the people in this community who's reached out. And these people, I mean, one of them can't afford to, you know, you can hire somebody to backhoe, and you get one load of gravel coming in, it's $400, I mean, a pop. I mean, it's just major. And if they've got money in Raleigh that they're giving away, our people can get it.
Is it, it's not too late to turn in an application?
No, it's going to remain open, and last week, the first-
What's the deadline on that?
It's, I don't think, Chairman Brown, there's a deadline yet. This is at least a two-year program. We'll get that information out, but I have not seen the deadline on the website so far. Last week, out of the 118 registered last week are completing an application, so.
And one thing to add to that, for the people that are watching and listening, you know, those people that have already fixed their issue or their problem, if they have pictures of the damage that was done, they get to admit that it's still possible, isn't it?
Yeah, that's right, because a lot of these locations, they had to get it fixed because they couldn't cross. I mean, we only had a few portable bridges to put out, but we've heard stories of people taking, elderly folks taking out $50,000 loans, $25,000 loans, or dipping into their retirement accounts. And these are the people that we want to get the assistance for.
This is just for residents only? It's not for LLC or corporations, anything like that?
That is correct. Businesses aren't eligible, and there's some stipulations if it's a second home. And there's also some income caps. If it's over $94,000, or the income is above $94,000, it's not in the priority funding. Doesn't mean they'll deny it, but it's not in the, in the top priority. Thank you very much, Joe.
Next on the agenda, item C here, introducing our new human resource director. And we'll turn this over to Mr. Wooton and let him introduce him.
Sure, Anna, if you want to come on up. The pleasure to publicly introduce to you all this evening Anna Lee, who's our new HR director. Last Wednesday was her first day with us. We were trying to find some metaphors and things today. You know, with COVID and everything else going on, it's a challenging time for anybody, but especially in the world of HR. And so we've reassured her that she's got a great support team around her, between myself and Ms. Presswood, who's helping with transition, and neighboring counties and others that will help out with orientation for her. Because local government is completely different, thankfully, than a lot of other fields. But it can be challenging and new, but she's, she's done great. She's local. She went to Western Carolina twice, a two-time graduate from Western Carolina, which is a great school. Been an App State grad, I will say that. It is a good school. But we're really excited she's on board and bright future ahead of her, I'm sure.
Anna, I'd just like to say I'm excited to have you on board, and we welcome you and look forward to all the good work you'll be able to do for our county.
Thank you, I look forward to it.
You come in soon. Just to add to my board.
Thank you. I look forward to it, and thank you, Ashley, for your warm welcome. And I appreciate you and Maria and working to get me trained. And I look forward to serving the community. And I have got to meet Chairman Brown and Vice Chairman Walker, but I look forward to working with the rest of you as well.
And I'll say this too. It's so good to have somebody who's local, who grew up here and understands the community that you're going to be working in and understands the people. You can bring somebody out of certain regions that come in here and act like they're better than people around here. And, you know, you're just, you're just one of us, and we're glad you're here. And Maria and our staff will do anything you need to help. Any help, they're great and they're supportive. And the only thing we regret is you don't get to work with our clerk too long in the same year.
Yes. Well, thank you guys so much, and I look forward to working with each of you and the county as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Item D, next on the agenda, is the plat review process request. And we've got Mr. Ron Harmon here to bring that to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The last couple of years, the plat review process has gotten more and more involved. And to offer the best customer service, we feel like we need to put in place some type of system that allows a couple of days for review with subdivisions, watersheds, floodplains, zonings, and things like that, Lake James. And then on the review officer side, which is our tax mapping department, they now have to verify per general statute ownership of a plat. If it's not inherently placed on the plat, then they have to do a background search to make sure that the ownership is correct. With that said, it's not that we're going to stop taking them as they come in, but there may be situations where we have to say, you'll have to leave it for a couple of days to allow us to approve. So what we're asking for is consideration of the plat review procedure that was submitted to you that we can say, drop it off, give us two days, and we'll get it back to you. This allows us to make sure that we check off all the boxes and everything is correct.
Very good, Chris, but the board.
Make a motion, we approve of the plat review process as presented.
Second. Motion second, new discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next on the form, this is item E, Animal Services Update. And we've got Mr. Terry Polster from Brittany Wright. Terry, do you want to lead us off?
Sure. Thank you again for opportunities to speak with you. I'm honored to be standing here. So many meetings, more there or back there, and now, after all these years, the nervous anxiety returns. We did want to give you a little update on our animal services. In August 2019, we partnered together on public services. We brought several other organizations and departments, some are in other umbrella of public services, and animal shelter was one of them. We changed that to be animal services so that not only were we just a shelter, we provided services to the county for all types of animal needs. And certainly, one of those huge partnerships is with our rescue organizations that are in the county. They are a vital group, groups that help us on an everyday basis. I quickly learned the importance of them when we did a complete change of staff in August of 2019. And those rescues stepped up, and I quickly learned how to clean, how to feed, and how to adopt properly during the time, and I am thankful, especially to those that helped. And I want to say that publicly. So under new leadership there, Brittany Wright, Rescue Veterinary Technician in State North Carolina, became our manager. And under her and the leadership is Taylor Guzman, a Registered Veterinary Technician. And then we have Ashley Binge as Shelter Attendant, and Marissa Sparks as Shelter Attendant part-time. That group has done an outstanding job through the years to restructure that organization, to provide a partnership with our rescues, to provide a happy place for the animals that come in, and as well as trying to help enhance the shelter and animal services, and trying to enhance the education to the public, to make it a good atmosphere when the people come to adoption, or if they have problems, issues, or needing vaccines or anything. Certainly through their help and hundreds of forever home adoptions each year to these deserving dogs and cats. They've helped enhance and promote the welfare of the animals as well as the responsibility to pet owners. They've changed the format of how people come in and wanting to become a pet owner. There is responsibilities to go with that and helping educate the public. They continue to partner with all our many animal rescue groups who want to see changes in the spade and neuter for our dogs and cats to help prevent that overpopulation in the county. And that's part of our discussions tonight. Susan Menard, Joy Harkel Road, certainly a big team member with the Mercy TNR program, and they, every day, work hard towards the animals here in McDowell County. It's an everyday process, an everyday challenge for all of us. And so I want to introduce Brittany real quick, let her speak, and then we'll bring Susan and Joy to follow up.
And I do have to hand out some numbers, if y'all would like those after. So for 2021, can I take this? For 2021, we took in 1,154 animals. Our total live outcome, which is adoptions, rescue, transferred rescue, and in turn to owners, was 1,068. One of our big rescue partners in the county pulling animals from our shelter is Rusty's Legacy. They have a transport program that takes those animals to New York, Canada, New Hampshire, places like that. That being said, in the county, that helps with animals, that prevents them from coming to the shelter is Mercy Fund Animal Rescue. They did 126 community assists this year. That's animals prevented from coming to the shelter that they helped free home with cooperating with owners. Okay? They also service a food pantry, which the ASPCA donated quite a bit of food to us that we in turn donated to them. That's not where all their food comes from, but that's where some of it did this year. They fed 38, almost 4,000 cats, 3897 this year, and $1,988. So that's, that's a lot of animals that were staying in their home when people couldn't afford to feed them. Okay? Preventing them from, some of them from eventually having to come to the shelter. We have grown immense- some of them from eventually having to come to the shelter. We have grown immensely with our return to owners in the shelter. We had our highest number that I have found to date, 194 this past year that went back to their owner. Most of those are dogs. I think this past year, six of those were cats. So the vast majority of that is dogs. We euthanized a total of 43. So out of 1,154 animals, that's quite a small number. Our community cat program that we started last year, that I came and talked about here, I think we started it in October of 2020, we did 142 animals this year. Now, that is aside from the 268 that Mercy Fund did through their TNR program this year. In total, since they began their TNR program, they have spayed or neutered 1,919 cats. So it's an ongoing effort. There are not enough spay and neuter appointments for all the animals that need to be done, all the cats that need to be done. A number that I wanted to mention were that 702 of the animals that we took in last year were strays. So that's strays that have been picked up either by a private citizen that was concerned they were going to be hit by a car, or it showed up at their house, or that's brought in by animal control sheriff's department because it was at someone's house. Or, you know, they don't just, contrary to popular belief, they don't look for dogs and cats to pick up. They usually get calls that require them to pick them up. So I also compiled a short chart from 2016, 2020, that just detailed our total intakes for those years, adopted animals, returned to owners, and euthanized animals. That I won't go over all those numbers, but even being a managed intake facility, we are still taking in comparable numbers to what we were when we were open admission. So, you know, there's still a great need for more space in our shelter.
Those animals that are picked up and brought to you, you know, just statistically, how many of those get returned to their owners? Does that happen?
Yes, we take our pictures. We are not legally required to post pictures of the animals on our social media, but we do that 95% of the time to try to get the animal back to their owner. If I get an animal that looks like it's not been taken care of very well, like very well, I mean, they're emaciated, their skin is infected, they're just, you can tell this animal has not been taken care of, I may not post that animal. And the reason being, we still keep that animal on a stray hold, because we have to keep every stray that's brought to us on a 72-hour stray hold. That's legal. I may not post that animal because I feel like the owner needs to come looking for that animal if they want that animal back. Our goal is to reunite animals with their owners. And we don't want to keep them from their owner, but we also want to make sure that the animal's been taken care of. So, I mean, there was 194 out of 1,154 returned, so I'm not sure that, I can't do that math in my head. But that is an increased number from, say, in 2017, there was 11 returned to owners. In 2016, there were 75 returned to owners. So, social media posting, taking a picture of that dog when it comes in, or cat, we post cats, but not as often, because a lot of times the cats brought to us have been where they've been for weeks, you know? We post those, and we do require picture proof or vet record proof that it is their animal. If they don't have a current rabies vaccine, we give that for $10. We do not require that animal to be spayed or neutered because that's not the law. But we do, you know, advise and recommend, if there's an animal that needs vet care, then we advise that they do that. That being said, if we get an animal in that has a broken leg, or we suspect a broken leg, or there is something that needs to be taken care of before an owner is found, we will take the animal to a vet ourselves.
Yeah, you answered my question. I appreciate it. Probably roughly 2% have made it back to their home. So 20% has made it back to their home. So that's a pretty good number. But we appreciate that.
We have partnered with, why say partnered, with Rusty's Legacy for a spay and neuter promotion. We are not, McDowell County is not funding this in any way. We're just kind of a contact point to spay and neuter dogs for free, for people to take advantage of that. So far, we have about 80 animals on the list through April. 80 dogs here in the county. And hopefully, that's going to continue throughout the year, and it may continue past that as well.
What group does the transfer of the animals across the mountain?
Rusty's Legacy. Jerry Arledge drives them. Yeah. They are not transported by the ASPCA. She transports them over. I think spay neuter is the most important component of reducing the number of animals in the shelter. I mean, it takes time, but that's the number one thing that's going to help reduce the amount of strays we have, the amount of animals that need to come to the shelter. Pet funding housing is another component. That's a lot of the dogs that we get, I think, come to us because people have to move and they can't take their animals. So that's another, that's a whole nother issue. But I think that that is quite important in this time to consider, to help reduce the number of animals that come into the shelter. You know, like I said, our need for shelter expansion continues, especially cat isolation, an increased number of dog runs. A cat isolation would help reduce the spread of contagious disease. Cats, a lot of times, come in with upper respiratory infections that spread like the cold spreads with us. And an isolation to put that cat in would allow it to get better more quickly and not spread it to the healthy cats in the shelter so that we can adopt those out more quickly. So we can adopt out the sick cats.
Cats are the biggest problem in the county.
Well, cats are a big, a big problem. I think there are more cats, and people don't tend to think they're a problem on their property till they're out of control, I think, until there's 15 or 20, where it's hard to manage that number. But cats become 15 or 20 pretty quick. You know, you can have three and then population explosion within a couple of months. Right now, though, we were having very steady cat adoptions. Dogs right now are our biggest issue, the amount of stray dogs that we're getting in. We've had 22 animals come in since the first. And of those 22, there's, I think, five of those have been cats. And five of those 22 have been reclaimed.
Is there a certain breed that you could have?
Pit bulls.
Pit bulls?
Yeah. Pit bulls, pit bull types, pit bull mixes, hound mixes, those are the ones that you see the most. We see some German Shepherd mixes, but pit bull types and hounds are the most common. I don't know if this is, if this is something that y'all can decide on today, or if it's something to consider. I had wanted to consider increasing adoption fees for dogs. 65 now, dogs and cats both, 65. Increase in adoption fees for dogs to $100. The reason for that is that now, we used not to. We spay and neuter, which that's always been included, spay, neuter the rabies. But we also heartworm test now, and we vaccinate for December parvo. And that's one or two vaccines, depending. And for puppies, it could be more if they stay with us that long. And we vaccinate at the shelter for rabies and for portatella, which is kennel cough. So we also do worm, we also start them on a flea preventative, and a heartworm prevention if they're heartworm negative.
I would go along with that. What would, you know, what would that compare to? Because I was on, one of my comments was going to be this, that I appreciate the fact that as an organization, you're providing, it's affordable for somebody to come down and to adopt, and the things that's already been done to the animals when they leave is beneficial to those who are being adopted, and to the families that are adopting animals. How would the package that you do as the shelter, how would that compare to what a veterinarian office would charge for the same package? I recently, I'm a dog dad now, and I've got my girl's little Aussie doodle. And so I've experienced firsthand some of the stuff with the vet's office. So I don't know how that would compare.
That could, a vet's office for a puppy package would probably be right around 100. That's for a first puppy visit. That's not including the spay and neuter. The spay itself would be probably right around 300 to 500, depending on the vet you use. A heartworm test is anywhere from $35 to $55. So, I mean, you could easily spend on a, you know, an animal that you find, and you take it to the vet, you don't get, you know, any kind of discount of any sort. You could easily spend, you know, $500 to $700 just to get started. And that's not including buying a six months' worth of heartworm prevention or flea prevention. So I think, and we do, we keep those records in our software, and we print those out for the owner, and we give it to them so that they can take that to their vet. And their vet, usually, most vets will take something from a shelter as, yes, this was real, this is done. You know, it's not like it's just written down. It's a medical record.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table this for 30 days to allow us to have to, on the, you know, there was no action required, but I'd just like to have 30 minutes.
Say that you have winning time to review.
Yeah. And I can give you all this too, so that you've got that too.
That'd be good, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Yep. And this is Susan Menard. She is part of Mercy Fund, Mercy Fund's animal rescue organization. And she heads the TNR program. So that's the trap neuter return program for cats.
Let us go ahead and vote on that. We've got a motion and a second. On first, say aye? Do you vote?
Hi, I'm not going to take my mask off. I'm going to have an ankle replacement in about two weeks, so I can't afford to take my mask off. So everything that I went over back on November 8th, not much has changed, other than we got the final count for all the feral cats that we've altered for 2021, which is 268 cats for the year. Each year, from when we started, April 2009, we started with 31 cats, have been going up progressively this year. Every year has been a record number of cats. This year is no exception. Compared to last year, 224, we're at 268. The total money spent, this is just for feral cat spay neuter, that's not counting all the cats and kittens and sick ones that we've taken in to rescue in the process of doing these feral colonies, because that's a whole separate ballgame. But the total money spent just to spay and neuter and vaccinate for rabies, 268 cats. This last year was $14,723.94. This is all privately funded. These are all donations. There is not a bit of government money in there. So I know you guys know how difficult it is to raise funds. It's monumental to raise almost $15,000 for feral cats. But we've done it.
What are you doing with the feral cats whenever you?
So, the purpose of trap and neuter and return, aka TNR, is to trap the cats, alter them, and return them back where they came from, their outdoor home. Cats have lived for thousands of years outdoors, and they can continue to do so. But there are times when the cats cannot be returned to their home territory. Maybe they're in a place that's not safe. Maybe they're in a place that they're not wanted. Or, I guess that would be the main two, unsafe or not wanted. For example, Mulligan Max, they had several cats show up there. You know, one of them was hit by a car. It's not a place for a cat to live, right? So we do our best to rehome those, relocate the ones that are truly feral and cannot be brought into your home, where, you know, they're not socialized to humans, to relocate them to what we call barn homes. But really, it could be any home that would like to accommodate an outdoor cat, provide a food and shelter. That's all they need, food shelter. So we do rehome cats that are in unsafe situations. The others would be truly friendly cats. They've been raised with humans. Somehow, they ended up at Mulligan Max. How? We don't know. There's been several of those that we've gotten into indoor homes through the regular Mercy Adoption Program. So ideally, TNR is, the sole purpose is not adoption, not relocating cats, but the sole purpose, the sole function, is to stop them from reproducing. So reducing the feral cat population is the simple and total goal of TNR. It's not rescue. But, you know, when you get involved in sad situations where cats need help or can be socialized, it tugs on your heartstrings. So we get them into the regular Mercy Adoption Programs and try to get them into homes where they'll lead better and longer lives. So with that said, my biggest issue is not just the work required and the time required and the money required, but the fact that these days, I take calls on a daily basis. And I'm, I used to take people on a waiting list. I'd say, okay, I can't get you this month, but by gosh, I can get you next month. And we'd always get a lull in the wintertime. We'd kind of do catch-up. And I'd catch up and get all those colonies done that I was currently working on, and be ready in the spring to address new people. But now I'm just telling people, I can't help you. I don't know when I'll be able to help you. And that's really disheartening. And I don't know who can help you either. But it's not me. Call me back February, call me back March. So there's just not enough funds. There's not enough money that I can raise. There's not enough volunteers that I can get to address.
We're booked through April for our community cat program. And I'll start booking into May as we get closer. I just don't, I don't like to look too far ahead.
None of us can meet the demand is the bottom line.
Yeah, meeting the demand is difficult. And that includes, you know, appointments, you know, I mean, getting appointments for these cats. You know, I've got so many slots I can use. And while ours doesn't cost, because the ASPCA does community cats and feral cats at no charge, well, once in. You know, we don't have that cost that we're concerned about, but it's the appointments that we lack.
So Brittany and I were talking about, you know, well, one of the components, you know, several years ago, we got the voucher system online, that if you're below a certain income level, you can go to DSS and get a voucher to have your cat or dog spayed here locally at no cost to you. You can talk more about the problems with that voucher system now.
Well, the voucher system, everybody, it exploded at first because the limit was so high, the income level that they allowed was so high. Well, now it's so low that many, many people are not qualifying, you know? Even if they, you know, make $200 over, you know, they're over that poverty guideline. So that's what, you know, we're seeing. People there still that I would consider low income, that are not able to get those two animals done per year at no fee, because they're just, they're not qualifying for that. So I don't know if, you know, I don't know really the best answer for that, whether approaching the state, you know, the state issues that, right, Ashley?
That's right.
So I don't know whether approaching the state and saying, you know, we've got, our usage of the vouchers has decreased. Is there any way that we can set another income level that is not so high, but just to bump it up a little to where more people that need it qualify? to where more people that need it qualify for?
Mr. Chairman, I want a motion. We send letter out, Senator High, Sandy Green, on behalf of these folks to inquire about possibly raising the income level to be able to help reduce the problem.
Say.
Motion and second on that, yes, sir.
That'll help some. I do get calls from people saying, you know, last year I got a voucher. Now I don't qualify. So that's happened many times. And I'm sure you've heard that as well, and Joy has as well.
Okay, let me take my folks out.
Aye.
Okay, we'll put those letters out. And listen, you guys just talked with Terry. And Terry, you can come back with, to us with requests of opinion.
Mr. Chairman, I see Joy Harper walking back to the back, but I think it's important for her to come up to the podium so we can, everybody may not know Joy, but I know Joy's worked for many years in the shadows, helping dogs and cats. And Joy, same work if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. Okay?
Yeah.
Well, I just wanted to say that Mercy has another program that we started because of the poverty level was so high. So we started a spay neuter voucher through Animal Hospital of Marion. And what we do is we spay it forward. So whatever you can, it costs us sixty-five dollars for every spay neuter. So whatever you can afford between, you know, five and sixty-five dollars, you spay that, you pay that forward and that spays another animal. So, you know, if somebody can afford fifty dollars or twenty-five dollars, then, you know, it adds up and helps to spay another animal. So we try to do that to get the people that just missed the DSS vouchers. But like they said, you know, Animal Hospital, we're scheduling at least two months out now, just with people that need to get animals done. The want to spay and neuter is here in the county. The people want to spay and neuter. It's just we're having trouble getting, getting everybody in and getting it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have old business, under old business, I made the American Rescue Plan update, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir, I'll be brief on this and we'll make a correction on the packet. As I noted last month, the U.S. Senate passed the bill that would grant additional flexibility for ARPA. That bill is still pending in the House. I believe it passed by voice vote in the Senate, so hopefully the House will take it up. One area, one reason it might not be considered even now is that Thursday, the U.S. Treasury issued new guidance. It's the final rule on how funds could be spent. And there is some more flexibility within the confines of the law, within that final rule. We partly attended a webinar Friday, it was very popular and we could barely get on. There will be another one Thursday at the School of Government. And we're thinking and hoping that the information that we were being told and will be provided, more clarification will allow more freedom for categories of spending that could take place under the funding. That, the final rule does take effect in April of this year. As I noted previously, you do have the first payment that is in hand and a second payment that will be coming this spring. There is no, was no attachment in here and that's an oversight. And we'll send out an updated spreadsheet of where we are right now. Some of the programs you've previously authorized, such as the vaccine incentive, have been paid out and get that updated to where next month we'll have that amendment before you.
Okay. One question, would that be sent out by Friday, Ashley?
That'd be the goal, yes, sir.
Okay, moving on to the broadband expansion update, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. Last meeting, you asked for an update on some of our broadband activities. I did reach out to, before Christmas, to both Spectrum and Optimum, the two dominant carriers in the county, to ask for any information they would like for me to share tonight. I did hear back from Spectrum actually today. I'll get into that in a second. I had not heard directly from Optimum or Altis in corporate communication, but I do understand, do have some information I'll talk about in a second. So just a couple of bullet points here. Back in the summer, you authorized the NTIA grants, the National Telecommunications and Information Administration. That is a federal grant. You authorized submission on, in partnership with Spectrum. The anticipated awards notification was to come in November this past year. They sent out, as I noted previously, that the interest was tremendous and they had too many applications to go through in, I guess, about four months. So we had been told early twenty-two for that notification. So we don't know. January this month, next month, whatever early is to federal government, we don't know. The state budget that was passed a month or so ago, there is the CAB program. Did a webinar on this a couple of weeks ago. This is completing access to broadband. So they will provide matching dollars to counties. They are using American Rescue Plan funds that have been granted to the state that they are then redirected to counties. So there's been a little bit of discussion about that. There's not been an open announcement as far as application dates yet.
Mr. Wood, real quick, one question. The restriction on the expenditure of feral funding, would that include the ARPA funding or not?
The way the statute is written, you're talking about the CAB program. They, it indicates in the statute and the bill that counties that have expended federal funds after May of 2020 are not eligible. Which, a lot of, well, I won't say a lot. Some counties are, have already authorized the use of ARPA funds. Some like us, there's about six, I believe, in the state that applied for NTIA or are still waiting, just like us, might be rule ineligible. And so some of the conversation back to Association of County Commissioners has been asking for some clarification on that to take back to your legislators to make sure what they're trying to say is not being misinterpreted, because a lot of counties have raised that same question. The, there is a hope that if it does preclude any additional infrastructure investment, that there might be an amendment to the program, just so, because a lot of counties are not benefiting.
If a county didn't utilize the CAB program, but wanted to go ahead and interpret whatever amount of ARPA funding towards the expansion of broadband in communities, is that allowable?
So if you didn't want to use CAB, that would be a good possibility. The other two programs, a lot of acronyms here for broadband. The Great Grant, I mentioned, Optimum or Altis, that was Morris. They had received a Great Grant, which is state funding, I believe in 2019. That is primarily in the Muckhead area, the Old Fort Sugar Hill Road area, Moffra Cove area of the county that we had heard for years and years and years that lacked service, is right outside of the, what was the Morris service area. Heard information earlier today that they are starting to activate some of this area that's been served by the Great Grant and have a few other areas that are still waiting to be activated. So that's been a long time coming and we're excited about that. And then the last one I'll touch on is ARDOF, is the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund. And these are federal funds that were allocated before COVID. So Charter was the primary beneficiary in this county for this fund. In the communication with Mr. Tank, who was here a couple of months ago, the ARDOF and the NTIA grants kind of go hand in hand. And the reason for that, as I mentioned in the memo, is that Charter is wanting to see how the NTIA grant is going to play out. If they get awarded, it might determine where they focus first in ARDOF funds. Do have an appointment with Mr. Tank in two weeks to go over some of these programs and hopefully by then we'll have NTIA information. So that's really the watershed moment, I think, for the county when we receive notification of NTIA. Because after that, if it's a positive, that, as we understand from Spectrum, will serve a lot of the rest of the uncertain area. If it's not awarded, I think we're having different conversations about some of the other existing programs. Great Grant, CAB perhaps, and ARPA.
If the NTIA grants are awarded, is that targeting also the area that, it wouldn't go into where Altis and Optimum in the Muffra Cove, Sugar Hill area, it wouldn't go there, right? Because that would already be covered.
Right, it wouldn't.
Because of the infrastructure there, right?
That's right.
Okay. So I think it'd be good to have the Altis and Optimum representative come back before the board to get an update, because as commissioner, that's where I get a lot of my calls from, people who live in that area. And is that the most underserved area in McDowell County?
Banner wants, uh, NCA.
NCA?
NCA, and there's, there's a little more known in the telephone contact.
With the, with the split, because part of the county's Spectrum, part of the county's Altis, and I don't know which is which. And I do think it would be beneficial if we could get them back to let us know exactly where we stand with each one of these potential grants. Because I know that Spectrum came in in July and they talked to a little over fifty-six hundred homes in theirs. And then August or September, when Altis came in, it was eight hundred and ninety-some homes, eight ninety-four, something like that. And it's, you know, we're just kind of dangling out there. We don't know exactly where we are. And I do agree with that.
Yeah, that big piece is that NTIA grant.
Yeah.
And it's, again, we're hopeful for the November and we're having probably a different conversation right now. But, yeah, I know they would be glad to come back and talk about, and hopefully by the February meeting, we'll know on this grant. And definitely we'll know.
Thanks, Altis, come back to you.
So do this, Jim.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You both, okay. Next on the agenda, I'd say, the building project update, go ahead, Mr. Wood.
Very brief updates, Mr. Chairman. Just as you can see, update on the North Main Administrative Offices. The upper level, I was in there, I believe, maybe Thursday with staff. It is getting very close to the final coats of paint and the carpeting, the flooring there. The lower level is just starting to get drywall installation and that's on purpose, to be able to have the upper level ready for board meetings sooner rather than later. The outside grounds are, parking lot is finished. They put down one coat of exterior paint on the registered deeds building. At least it's partial, when I was there Thursday, and the intent would be that it would match this building as well. The headquarters for emergency services center the final stretch. After this memo was typed, we did get information that half of our garage doors will be delivered, if not already. And hopefully the other half within a reasonable timeframe. The springs for the doors have been to hold up there. There's still some roofing material we're waiting on, but interior finishes are well on their way. And on a related note, did want at least bring up the conversation with the current station one, which is downtown Garden Street. There's been discussion about the future fate of that building, but there's been no formal decision and staff needs formal direction for that building. Either reutilization or removal. And either way, we need a board consensus or vote.
What's recommendation, go ahead and say it.
I know we originally talked about, you know, carrying it all down, making a parking lot out which we desperately need.
I think marketing seems the most needed thing in that area.
Yeah. But at this point, you know, I'd like for, this would be my recommendation, that staff look at, if there's anything that our county could use that building for, any department or something that you need to use that building for, to get back with us with an interest in that, you know, you know, or a suggestion or a recommendation that we look at it for something else for the county. Otherwise, you know, prepare it in town and make it a whole parking lot.
A suggestion might be to have someone from Holland and Hammer go through the building and give us an idea on what it would take to bring it to modern standard. As Mr. Keller can attest, there's not been significant investment in the building for the last number of years due to the impending.
If they said not to. Take it out and just make party mod, you know, I'm good with that. But, you know, if you have something that you would recommend that we use it for, I'd like to hear it, if you have a recommendation.
If it's all right, we'll have someone from the firm go through, because it would need some work for whatever's going to be in there. Anything else, we can bring that back next month.
The boys are long, you have an idea of when the North Main Street Administrative Offices are going to be opening up?
The, the goal for the upper level would be by the end of February.
Well, you're on that one too, actually. I didn't think to mention this. I'd like to suggest that we have our February meeting in the old boardroom as kind of a farewell to the old boardroom and maybe make something special a bit. Because, I know, David, you've been in there for many, many years and I've been in there for quite a few years. And, you know, it, there is some sentiment to it. And so I think I would recommend that we have our February meeting there, because that might be the last one before we go into the new building. So just sort of do a farewell to the old boardroom.
So maybe bring in some formal commissioners.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
And bring them in there and, I'm sure they can tell some war stories for me.
As just an idea, whatever the poor things. Your motion, we did it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that staff coordinates plans and has some kind of acknowledgement that that is going to be the official last meeting of the commissioners in that, in that building officially regarding the monthly meetings and bring back recommendations to the board via electronic communication email as to what you would recommend for that last meeting.
I'll go to the end, please, sir.
Okay. Motion, say any discussion. All folks, aye.
Aye.
Next, Mr. Wood, the Neva Water System Project Update.
Very brief, you authorized the execution of a contract with McGill Associates for the Neva Water System expansion. They have that and they're doing some very early work on that. The one area they did tell us early on they were going to focus heavily in the early days is on the old number ten area where there's a railroad crossing. They did say that was going to be more of a challenge in the area to cross. So they're working on that, I'm sure, probably as we speak. It's not on the memo, but the completion there, Stacy Hill Road and Seventy, should be completed within the next couple of weeks. They're going to work on that board either this week or next and hopefully tie that up and have that loop completed. That's all on that update.
Mr. Chairman, also the water filtration plant and where we had that process permitting, discussions. I know you're trying to maybe organize a set of the meanwhile.
You're the Thursday man. I'll be able to talk more after our meeting Thursday with engineer.
Okay, good deal.
All right, next on them, I'd need the shooting range operation. Mr. Wood, give us update there.
Yes, sir. As many of you have seen, if you haven't been out on site, there are some pictures somewhere in the packet here. some pictures somewhere in the packet here. The shooting range is quickly approaching, may seem like slowly, but it is approaching completion. We're hoping for a March or April public opening. And so that means that we as staff and you as a board, more importantly, you as board, have some decisions to make on some of the more operational details. And so you have in front of you the standard operating procedures for the shooting range. These are draft SAPs from NC Wildlife that are essentially a template that they put together for several of the ranges. You know, a lot of it is very basic and standard practice for typical safe handling firearms at a public range. And so if you would like to treat this as a first reading, especially on the SAPs and anything you see, if you want us to either tonight or over the next couple of weeks to take back to staff or wildlife, we'll be glad to do that. You also see on, you know, items 15 and 16, these are locally, definitely locally decided items for you to determine either tonight or later our operating hours. And as proposed by staff, what has been put in here is Sunday closed, Monday would be a maintenance day, Tuesday closed the public, but say reserved for law enforcement or for age or school usage. And then Wednesday through Saturday being open to the public for, for visitation. And then item 16 are some proposed fees. And again, these are based on input from, or based on examples that we've seen, I believe in Pender County and Cleveland County as well.
This was reviewed by you and Chad?
Yes, sir.
And this is the recommendation. I would consider this, I'd like to make a motion this be considered first read.
I would agree with that. It still needs to have some tweaking. I know I've covered everything you've done there.
Second, for discussion purposes, with that being said, I believe the, whoever is on staff and on site needs to have the ability to do a concealed carry. You've got firearms and weapons down there, and I think that whoever, whoever is working down there needs to have that opportunity. Now, they may decide not to, but I do think that they need to be able to conceal carry.
I think they should be required to have concealed carry.
I think they should be required as well.
And I think it should be optional. I think they should be required to have concealed carry.
Even better. But I would, I would state that if this is going to be a first read, that that be considered when it comes back to us for review.
The motion second, I believe.
Got a motion in second on that? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Mr. Wood, new business, we do out of May, administrative items.
You have, you have two leak adjustments for Negro Water. Ask you approve those.
Make a motion to approve the leak adjustments presented.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
The only other item, you do have the memorandum of agreement between the county and Little Lee. Heard a few comments just after you reviewed it. Be glad to take any more and any adjustments you'd like to make tonight.
Mr. Chairman, on number one, under now therefore, going over the agreement of the parties in the agreement, number one, it says it shall remain in effect until terminated by consent of all parties, as discussed in more detail. Most agreements we enter to have wording that states, I know with the city regarding the fire protection for the inmate district, that if either party wants to terminate that, that gives notice by a certain day of the year. And so I think that we need to take out, take out that consent of all parties and just keep it standard to what we're accustomed to and then with other entities that we have agreements with. Is that, Mr. Wood, is that part standard?
It is. And if you jump down to item six in that list, there is an exit clause, but I think that was just an oversight to have that in there so that could be removed very easily and still give you the power to get out of any agreement.
I'll make a motion that we approve the document that's presented with the deletion, number one, of that sent of all parties, because you've got it covered down in, as Mr. Wood said, number six.
Got a motion in second on that. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That was all the administrative items. Mr. Wood, item B, tax matters.
Yes, sir. These are routine. You do have a couple of discoveries, a couple of releases, including the vehicle, three tons of releases.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the discovered and releases as presented to the board.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is citizen comments. Did we have anyone here that was wishing to speak tonight? If so, they need, you need to sign in with Madam Clerk. Okay, we'll, Sarah, citizen comment presented to NCTS 1538-52. Okay, I think citizen comment. Next is communication.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask manager to fill us in again on the I-40 interchange and the, hopefully some timelines of what's taking place. I know it's NC DOT for the emails we receive, but just want to talk about it publicly.
Sure, absolutely. In your last meeting, you directed staff to send a letter to NC DOT, which is done. Send that to Division Engineer Mark Gibbs the same day his staff reached out. And the letter acknowledges that this is an issue with the bridge, is not of NC DOT's doing, of course, and asking for updates that we had received. Their staff indicated that, has been indicated in public discussions, news articles, et cetera, that there are issues with the current contractor, significant issues, is probably still underselling it. But the, there's discussions between the Attorney General's Office, between NC DOT and the contractor, and I believe with the bonding company. And so whenever those conversations are happening, there's clearly an understanding that perhaps the current contractor might not be able to complete the work. So that is underway. The anticipated completion date I was shared was 2023, and that's for the entire project. They present the opportunity to come tonight, and I think because of the pending litigation, they're not comfortable coming to the setting because of what might happen. But they did offer any other.
One thing people think, looking at it, they think it's half done, which it's really not. There's a lot more to be done. See, this southern bridge has to be, there has to be demolition. You know, that wasn't something that they had to face on the first round. It's going to be a bigger, bigger deal. So I hope it will work out.
There is a, just, I think there is a significant safety hazard on the old ramp going west with, if the west traffic on 40 is heavy, the merging traffic on the ramp is going to, they have to really be flexible and looking closely. I do it every day. And it's, there is a significant danger because there is no extension. It goes to a stop and you have concrete barriers there. And we need to, we need to continue to put a little bit of pressure in that aspect as far as safety side anyway.
Yeah, that entrance ramp there needs to go far beyond what it's doing right now for safety. Okay, any other questions, comments?
I know there's been some good points brought up tonight with the animal situation, but I do know that there's been getting hit up with senior daycare here in the county. And I know that, just wanting to ask questions and start, no presentation, no motions, nothing like that. But when the new offices up on Main Street open up and we get moved out of the basement of Senior Center, potentially look at that at some point in the future about senior daycare. Just won't make a statement at this time.
You got it, Thomas.
I would draw a motion. I was quick, I was quick.
It's pretty quick. Mr. Chairman, we had talked about, I'm uncertain if Madam Clerk had sent out possible meeting dates. And so, good. She's going to add a point from me. But meeting on the 19th, I believe was in the email, at 8:30. If we could maybe adjourn to that for a solid waste discussion, that would be great.
Your motion. If you adjourn to that, I make that motion.
And that would be at the old boardroom.
Okay. Got a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
You are. Adjourn.